I am calling to order the Wednesday, May 20th, 2020, public meeting of the City of Falls Church Planning Commission. This meeting will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of the Planning Commission will be present at this meeting through electronic means, and all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting and on FCC TV by going to Channel 11 for Cox, Channel 2 for RCN, and Channel 35 for Verizon. Public comments will be accepted electronically until the end of the public hearing. Please submit your comments via email to plan@falschurchva.gov. All right, Ms. Bazemore, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Rankin?
I'm here.
Mr. Krasner?
I'm here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Redesca?
Here.
Mr. Puentes?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Weiss?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. A quick reminder for my fellow commissioners, please make sure you've muted yourself unless you plan to talk. I think this will help us avoid technical problems with echo and make it easier for everyone to hear whoever is speaking. At this point, can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
I heard Ms. Teetz move, and I'm going to assume Mr. Krasner's in a second. Is that right?
That's right.
All right, this is the only time we'll do this, but all those in favor, go ahead and unmute and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? None opposed, therefore the agenda is adopted. Ms. Bazemore, do we have any petitions from the public for items not on the agenda?
No.
We do not. Great. We do not have a speaker series tonight, which brings us to our action items, and we'll start with the 212 East Jefferson Street subdivision application. Just a quick reminder, anyone watching the meeting, if you have any comments, you can email them to plan@falschurchva.gov. And if you do that right now, we can actually receive them before the end of the meeting. So with that, Mr. Stotter, do we have a staff presentation on this subdivision?
There is a... Sorry. Sorry. There is. There is a staff report for this item. The action before the Planning Commission is to grant approval of a preliminary plat. There is a staff report that I will turn it over to Ms. Ruzi to provide.
Good evening, everyone. It's Akita with Planning. This is a subdivision application and preliminary plat before the Planning Commission tonight for approval. The applicant is asking to subdivide the existing lot at 212 East Jefferson Street into two R1A zoning lots, Lot 13B1 and Lot 13B2. Before I provide the staff evaluation of the application and the preliminary plat, I would like to provide some background. You guys can hear me, right? I just kept talking, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. The application was first filed in September, and the applicant has gone through multiple iterations of the plat in the last few months in response to comments from staff and the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission held a work session on November 4th and provided preliminary feedback on an earlier version of the plat. The Commission offered feedback on several elements of the subdivision, including potential impacts of the subdivision and a new development on the character of the historic home, zoning setbacks and the proposed demolition of the rear addition, and lot configurations and lot shape. During that time, we also received guidance from the city attorney on the application of the yard averaging requirement in Section 48-1102 of the zoning code. Her guidance was that the yard averaging requirement should be applied for front yard setbacks moving forward, which differs from past practice and the zoning administrator's past interpretation. I won't go into too much discussion on that, but the latest plat provides a deeper setback that complies with the yard averaging requirement. So specifically, some of the key updates to the subdivision application and preliminary plat since the last work session include: Current plat provides a front yard setback of 44.97 feet as a result of applying the yard averaging requirement. The earlier iteration of the plat reviewed by the Planning Commission on November 4th applied a standard R1A front yard setback of 30 feet. Two, the current plat incorporates updates and improvements identified in the staff letter dated October 11th, 2019. That's part of your attachments. That letter and the revised plat now includes pedestrian improvements at the corner of East Jefferson Street and North Cherry Street that entails extending the North Cherry Street sidewalk so that it turns the corner and creates a small curb extension that ends at the new accessible ramp. Additionally, a crosswalk would be installed across East Jefferson Street to connect to the existing sidewalk on the north side of the street. Three, the Historical Architectural Review Board held a public meeting on December 9th and approved the proposed demolition of the rear addition. So for that demo, the applicant does have an approval. A requirement of the subdivision is compliance with the zoning code for lot dimensions and setbacks. Attachment four of the staff report provides a visual illustration of zoning evaluation as well as relevant code definitions. As proposed currently, the plat meets all the required front, side, and rear yard setbacks for both lots proposed under the subdivision. However, the rear addition has to be removed as part of the subdivision to comply with the side setback requirements, and the staff recommended condition in the proposed motion addresses this issue. The plat also meets the minimum lot area and lot width requirements for both lots. While the subdivision creates an irregular L-shaped lot, staff is not aware of any provisions in the code that would prevent such configuration as long as the lot dimensions and setbacks comply with the zoning code. With that, staff recommends approval of the preliminary subdivision plat. In terms of process, should the Planning Commission approve the preliminary plat this evening, the applicant has to file a final plat for review and approval by the Planning Commission within six months from today. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take questions now or later. I believe the applicant's representatives, his attorney, and his engineer are online to provide a presentation, so I can either wait until after that for questions, or I can take questions now. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Ruzi, thank you for that. I don't have any questions, but I will pause for a second. If any commissioners have a question to ask before the applicant's presentation, go ahead and unmute and say so, and I'll give you a chance.
I just had one question. We didn't get the part of the application that shows signatures. Does the application now have the signatures of all the landowners? Because previously it did not.
It does not. The requirement of the preliminary... The final plat is that all applicants sign, but not of the preliminary plat. So right now, what's up for approval is the preliminary plat, but the final plat is required to have all signatures. But we don't have the final plat.
So this would be approved, but it would be based on administrative showing of the signature before they would get a final, is that what you're saying?
And no, the...
I think we've got...
So the preliminary plat would be approved tonight if you approve it, and then they would have to... They would be required to submit a final plat, which also has to be approved by the Planning Commission. That requires signatures.
Yeah.
Okay.
Often, we consider the preliminary and final plat at the same time, but it sounds like in this case, it's being split apart.
That's right. They have the option to get approval sequentially for two plats.
All right. And Mr. Krasner, I think you had a question?
Yeah, I did have a question. A question for staff, for Ms. Ruzi. The grayed-out area, that's kind of the tail on the new lot, that obviously, you know, is clearly the way it's shown, the owner of 13B will continue to have... B1 will continue to have access through there. There'll need to be an easement, and I don't see that shown on the plat. I mean, wouldn't we want to have that shown on the plat? There's going to need to be an easement. I mean, I don't know what the terms of that easement are going to be. I mean, I'd be interested to know, since, again, they're using that land area for the purposes of satisfying the minimum lot area for 13... For the new lot, essentially, I'm imagining through some type of creative easement language, they're allowing the owner of the current existing house to continue to use that land. I'm curious what the exact terms of that would be, and I think that should be noted on there, unless I'm missing it. Maybe it is noted and I'm missing it. If that's the case, please correct me.
That note actually used to be on the plat, but no, you're right. I don't see it here. But yeah, for the final plat, I think we would want them to show that there is an easement there, and they have to also submit to staff the draft deed. So that also needs to include it.
I would... I mean, I'd want to see it now. I mean, I think it needs to be on this plat. I don't know why it was on before, and I have some vague recollection that it was. I don't know why it was removed. I mean, I think it needs to be there. I mean, I'm curious to know the bounds of it. Is it that whole grayed-out area? What the terms of it are? You know, what can that person do with that area or not do? I mean, it's curious to me, and I think for the purposes of the subdivision, I'd like to know what rights each side has to that little rectangle along the street there. Maybe the applicant can answer that, and if they can, I'll look to their presentation for that answer, but I think it needs to be there. I think the easement needs to be shown. The meets and bounds of it need to be delineated with the rest of it. I mean, it's an integral part of the subdivision.
All right. We'll see what the applicant says. Any other commissioners with questions before we go to the presentation?
Chair, I can hold my comments for after, but my comments do look at how this conforms to our zoning code, because I don't believe it conforms in several areas.
Yeah, let's get into the meat of it after the applicant presentation.
That's fine. Just wanted to check. Thank you.
I have some questions about that as well.
This is Tim. Do you have a question, too?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Stevens.
I'm just wondering, following up on the issue of the easement, are there any other examples in the city where an easement has factored so prominently in the preservation of a historic building?
Ms. Ruzi, any thoughts on that?
I am not aware of any.
All right, well, maybe as we go, if anyone has any thoughts on that, they can chime in. All right, do we have any other questions? If not, we can throw it over to the applicant. I don't know who on staff coordinates that, but I will let you guys take it away.
Dave or Antonette? This is Paul. I don't know who's planning to go first.
Yeah. Hi, this is Antonette Isherwood with Walter Phillips. And I don't actually know if Dave Lasso was able to get on.
Okay, I think I'm logged on.
Oh, there you are. Okay, great.
I'm logged on and trying to follow along. Thank you.
Great. So I was going to run through the presentation here and then can help answer questions as well. And then Dave's also here to provide some information, and we can both answer questions. So just a real brief presentation, and I think Akita really went through most of it. It's more of an update since the work session of what has changed. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So this is just a view of the front of the house. Again, the existing historic home is to remain. Next slide, please. And so this was the previous preliminary subdivision plat that was submitted, and since then, we've addressed a couple of the staff comments. And I know, sorry, it's kind of hard to read on this screen here. If you could go to the next slide, please. So just a couple of the things that were updated, which Akita did mention. So the same area of the addition is proposed to be removed in the rear in order to meet the setbacks. This was approved by the Historic Board on December 19th. And this plan here shows the existing improvements that are going to be removed on 13B2 prior to any new construction. We've also added a proposed crosswalk at the intersection of Cherry and East Jefferson to tie into the sidewalk on the east side of East Jefferson Street, and that was in response to staff comments. And then we've also added the required parking space since the detached garage will be part of the separate lot, and that's just along East Jefferson Street. Additionally, we are proposing, so I apologize, it looks like the label was left off, but it is... There is a proposed perpetual landscape easement in that shaded area, so that is the extent of the proposed easement. The final subdivision plat would show that. However, I do believe the intent is for that to be a private easement, which is really between the two landowners is what that would be, and the terms of that would also be a private easement. And then the last thing that was changed on this plat from the one that we attended the work session with is that the front yard setback on Lot 13B2 was adjusted per the staff comments to be the average yard setback, which equals a 44.97 dimension, 44.97 feet dimension. The next slide, please. And these are just a couple of the existing site photos, and the rear portion that was, again, an addition in the 90s that will be removed. Next slide, please. And these are existing elevations that were prepared for the HARB meeting to show just the difference between the existing, and then the following slide has the proposed elevations, so you can see what the changes would be. If you could go to the next slide, please. So in the proposed elevations, you'll see that the style of the proposed alteration is to maintain the same style as the existing, and it's just cut slightly. And again, it is just a portion of the addition that was in the 90s, and a portion of the addition is actually still remaining. And that is all I really have for the presentation, and highlighted most of the changes, or yeah, most if not all of the changes. And I would like to turn it over to Dave. He has a couple of comments to make.
Thank you, Antonette. I did want to note, Steve was not able to make it this evening. His wife is quite ill, as I think all of you know, and he is attending to her needs. Steve did prepare some comments that he asked me to read for you, and so I'm going to read from his comments, and they are as follows. "I would like to thank the zoning and planning staffs, especially Mr. Boyle and Ms. Ruzi, for their guidance and help in moving our application to this point, and I want to thank the great work done by Ms. Isherwood. Over the two years Barb and I were thinking about and planning our retirement, which has now become end-of-life planning, and how to maximize our assets to support that. Our 30-year residence is our major asset, and we were especially interested in ways that would enable us to remain in the house while we were still able to take care of it. Subdividing the lot seemed to be the best option to achieve those goals. We consulted with Mr. Boyle on numerous occasions to determine if subdivision was even possible. It was clear that in able to do that, the rules required the partial demolition of the 90s addition to the old house, 1990s addition. We were assured if we did that, the rules regarding setbacks and minimum lot sizes could be met, and our subdivision would be approved. We worked with staff to accommodate their request and revise the initial subdivision accordingly, proceeded to the HARB, and received their approval for the demolition. At the mandated Planning Commission work session, there was much discussion about issues of concern, especially about the historic house and HARB, but not a single comment was made till that point about yard averaging. Then, after the work session, we were ambushed with a yard averaging standard which had never been raised by the zoning or planning staff or planning commissioners. So we were playing by the rules, and the rules were changed in the middle of the game. That is retroactive, arbitrary, and unfair. We understand, from Ms. Ruzi, that to the best of their knowledge, no subdivision has ever had a yard averaging standard imposed on them, and I think Steve means in the way that it is now being imposed. At a minimum, the new setback standard should be applied to applications going forward from the date of the imposition of the new standard. What is especially difficult to take away is why the government body, like the Planning Commission, would intentionally impose an arbitrary newly-applied standard retroactively, which has the effect of diminishing the value of a homeowner's property. Nevertheless, we felt we had no choice but to submit our application revised using the newly-imposed standard. We thank you for your consideration of our application and request that it be submitted as approved." So that was Steve's statement, and for my part, I would simply say that Antonette has laid out for you a revised subdivision that uses the yard averaging, as is now being interpreted by the staff with the approval of city attorney and, I assume, other agencies in the city. So it meets all of the standards of the zoning ordinance, although I can see from this... From one comment this evening that there may be some concern about that. So we'll work with you tonight to try to answer those questions. But Steve and Barb do want to get this approved. There is a timeliness issue. The state law and the city charter requires that these subdivisions be approved in a specified amount of time that's already been exceeded for a variety of reasons. And we hope that we can get the preliminary approval done tonight, and we hope that you will approve this using the condition as drafted in the staff report. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Lasso. I am going to go through the commissioners in alphabetical order by last name, calling on you one by one for questions and comments. Usually, when we're all sitting together in the same room, we have a fair amount of conversational approach to it, because we're doing it electronically. I'd like to keep it pretty individual. So if you are listening to someone's question or comment, you have a related question or comment, I encourage you to jot it down and save it for your turn. If you've already had your turn, I'll circle back at the end to give everybody another chance to follow up on anything. But I encourage you to figure out your questions ahead of time, so on the second pass, it's just follow-up questions and not new ones. So unless Paul or someone has any comments on that, I'm going to go with Mr. Krasner. You're up first.
Okay. I mean, I kind of asked my question. I heard Ms. Isherwood's response. I mean, I think I like, for the final plat, that easement needs to be shown, in my opinion. It's an integral part, you know, of this subdivision. I mean, the way it's been drawn, I mean, by showing those features to remain. I understand it's a private easement, but I'd be interested to know what the terms of that easement might be. It's going to affect these lots going forward. I agree it's a private easement. Perhaps it could be changed in the future, but if we're going to vote on it now, I'd like to know exactly what the limits of control of that piece of land are. How many... You know, what are the limits being placed on the owner of B2, essentially? I mean, and the reason I ask it is because to me, it gets at, you know, while I believe that ultimately the subdivision does meet the minimum requirements in the city ordinance, in the zoning ordinance, to create a new lot. And so in that sense, I mean, I will support approval of the subdivision today. I, you know, my commentary on it is that I feel that, you know, we see time and time again, you know, we have some very talented and, I'll say, creative engineers who are able to, you know, find ways to shoehorn in new lots. And so, you know, and this is one of the more creative ones we've seen, where not only does it have a tail, but the tail is going to be placed in an easement so that ultimately it's going to appear to some people that, you know, that that land, you know, remains under ownership of B1. The owners of B2 now and in the future will probably have very limited, if any, control over that. So they're really having a lot that doesn't meet, practically speaking, does not provide the square footage of land that would normally be required for a lot in the zoning district. And so, you know, to me, it's creative, and it may, you know, again, meet the minimum requirements, but it's problematic, you know, from a policy standpoint. That may be a bigger picture discussion for another day with us and the way we look at the zoning ordinance and how we, you know, what we require as far as configuration of lots. You know, and that's something maybe to look at for another application in the future, but this raises yet another concern that I have, you know, seeing more and more creative ways to carve out a new lot in the city. But for this application, and that's my, you know, I do think that the easement, at a minimum, it needs to be identified. I mean, the area is kind of grayed out on the plat, so to me, it's being called out, and without a label to explain why it's called out, then it makes no sense. So at a minimum, I'd like to see something that refers to what that area of land is, and if you can provide more details in a note, you know, in addition to a label that explains it, that an easement will be recorded in the future, running to the benefit of lot, you know, owner of B1. I mean, I, you know, again, I don't expect you to record the easement now. You can't do that really until it's created, but I'd like to know more about it, and I think the plat, at a minimum, needs to call it out so that it's memorialized for posterity exactly what was approved here and what the restrictions are on that piece of land. So but, you know, with that, you know, my other... I kind of said my other piece. I think for me, this thing kind of rose and fell on Harv's determination on the historic value of that addition. I think the really difficult decision probably rested with them. If they told... I was really relying on them to tell me whether or not that addition could come down. They've apparently... Evidently, they've said that it can, and therefore, you can have a house that will meet the setback, and we're not creating a non-conforming condition. And based on that, you know, I think it meets the minimum, and the other issues I think we'll need to talk about, but otherwise, you know, I would reluctantly support it because it meets the minimum, and we're compelled to approve it. But I think it raises policy issues and questions going forward.
All right, thanks, Mr. Krasner. Up next, Mr. Puentes, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes. I would associate myself with Mr. Krasner's comments, particularly about the Harv and their role in this. And I'm not going to repeat, but my question that is, I think, is to staff. There is a letter from Cynthia Garner proposing some additional language about the historic addition or the historic property. Can you just clarify, does the revised language make sense for this motion? Can you provide any additional detail on what they're trying to get through here, if that's something we should be considering?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Puentes. I actually don't have any problems with the revised language. I read her letter. I do, I just, I do have concerns about the piece about Harv approval, HARB. They already approved it. To condition it to their approval would mean there's subsequent action needed, and there is no subsequent action needed. And I actually double-checked with the staff liaison, and he did say they approved it. They don't need to go back. And so I'm not quite sure about that addition, but the beginning language to help to clarify the motion, I don't have a problem with including all of that stuff.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Stevens, do you have questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, but I will second the thought that there were some suggestions made in the Cynthia Garner letter that seemed to make sense to me, and it sounds like they have as well to Ms. Ruzi. So I think I would certainly support their adoption, you know, especially the removal of the currently-applied and practiced language. It just seems to me that goes without saying, that there's always an interpretation factor in everything that we deal with. So, as we've learned, the city attorney can sometimes change that interpretation, and so that's just something that can happen. So, that's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Stevens. That brings us to Ms. Teetz. I know you have some questions.
I do have some questions. And first, I just want to clarify the average of yards very quickly. It did not come out of the blue. We have a 2006 settlement that says that the city is average yards. Average of yards has been on the books for decades. There's a 2010 and 2015 BZA decision that averaging must happen. And I have mentioned averaging in every subdivision case that's come before us that did not have averaging. So, I apologize to the applicant if it felt like it came out of the blue, but that is not on the planning commission's side. That is on the staff's side, which chose to disagree with these decisions made by the BZA and also with the legal settlement. So, moving on to my questions. Basically, I don't think the subdivision is conforming, so I will not be able to vote for it. The staff held up the definition for yards as one of the reasons why they thought they could have this dog leg. And I guess they're saying that the definition isn't clear enough, nor is diagrammed to clear enough to say they can't do this. But I don't actually, I believe that if you look at the lot, if we're going to look at, we're going to use definitions to decide what code means, then look at the lot line definition. So, on a, and this is from our code, it says, "On a corner lot or double frontage lot, each lot line that separates the lot from the street shall be considered a front lot line." So, if you read that definition, it suggests that on a front yard side, that front yard line, lot line should be between the street and the lot. And so, in no way is there any provision for an extra third of a side lot coming around the side. The other thing is, there's nothing in the code that suggests like how long this extra side yard could be. This seems to be very arbitrary. Could that side yard go five more feet down that side? Could it be one foot down that side? There's no code language for this anywhere. And everywhere that you hear about front yard or front lot line, it's talking about being between the street and the lot. And so, there's just no way this conforms to that. And I know I was trying to look in the code for something any similar. The only similarity to this dog leg piece would be pipe stems, and in that case, the pipe part actually doesn't count as part of the lot's footage. So, my understanding is that gray area is part of that 11,255 square feet, and without it, you don't have the right lot size. And I just don't think there's any way we can consider that gray part to be part of that lot. I don't think there's any way that you can have a side lot wrap a building like that. That is a corner lot. It has two front yards, two side yards, two front lot lines, two side lot lines. There's no way to wrap it. You can't have one and two-thirds front lot lines and two and one-third side lot lines. It's just, I don't see how it's possible. I think if you want to do something like that, you need to go to the BZA and get a variance. There's no reason in a situation like that, you can't go to the BZA and let them look at it, because this is a variance. This is not something you can do under our current code. And beyond that, I actually don't think it meets the historic and cultural conservation overlay code, the language as written, and that the house is supposed to be in context without any distractions. And I think having part of its front yard on one side not be in its front yard doesn't really comply with the language as written for HCC overlay. So, that's just, I just feel like there's no reason for us to do something like this when the code doesn't support it and you have the ability to get a variance. I guess the other thing is, I just want to say that I believe that Barbara Cram is one of the finest human beings I've ever met. I think she's a wonderful person. But I am concerned that her signature is not on this document and that therefore, we're doing preliminary. I think, I feel like, I feel like it'd be a lot more comfortable assuming this is what she wanted if she had actually signed this application. So, I just want to put that out there, but mostly, I don't really have a question because I already looked at the code and it's clear to me this is not conforming.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Teetz. Up next, Ms. Weiss, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I do. Is the easement in Lot B2 considered part of the front yard in that lot? I don't know.
I think the answer is yes, but I'll let staff answer.
That's a tough question. It is and it isn't. It's, the front yard is where you can't build on, so they're not going to be building on that portion. So, in that sense, it is a front yard, but they're meeting their front yard requirement is really where they're not building and they have the 44.97. Does that answer your question? Sorry.
Well, just looking at the front yard definition, it means a yard extending from side lot line to side lot line between the front lot line and the front building setback line. So, if it's to extend from the front lot line and the front building setback line, then if it's part of the front yard, it should go to the 44.97-foot front setback line throughout, across the entire front yard, right?
Understood, but except the front setback line is not directly across from that portion. If you look at the plat, the front setback line is where they're providing the 44.97.
And that's why I'm asking, trying to understand, is, what yard would this be considered and what, how can we understand the definition that would apply to that piece of land?
I think the front yard requirement definition would then apply between the front setback, which is that dark shaded box, if you're looking at the plat, and then the front lot line. So, that's where they have the full width, the 44.97. And the other portion, which is sort of the L-shaped carved out to meet the minimum lot requirement, is 30 feet. It's not, the reason I say it is and it isn't is it's not really required to be the full depth. And again, this is uncharted territory. I haven't seen anything like this, and I sort of did my best to review the code and seems like they meet the definition to me, because the yard is, the front yard is defined as between the building setback line and then the front lot line, and that area is providing the 44.97 feet.
I guess, to me, we have, the front yard extends from side lot line to side lot line, and I can see the sort of white rectangle meets that criteria, but then we have this extra gray territory that extends beyond part of the side. Well, okay, so let me ask another question. Is the boundary between the gray easement and Lot 13B1, is that a side lot line?
Great. So, if you look at that attachment for the colored illustration...
They call it a side yard for Lot B1.
Yep. Yeah. So, the green is the side yards, and then the pink are the front yards, but that gray portion that's shown as easement is, really, isn't the front yard, because it's not between the building setback line and then the front lot line. That definition has two qualifiers to me. The first says it's between the side lot line and the side lot line, but the second part is the real qualifier, which then says it has to be between the building setback line and the front line.
I just wonder if we're creating a new type of yard here without any kind of formal definition, because it's either a front yard, if it's a front yard, by the definition of front yard, then it should extend to the front building setback line, in which case, it would need to go to 44.97. If it's not a front yard, and it's not a side yard, and it's not a rear yard, then I guess I'd like to know what it is and what standards we should apply to figure out if it's conforming or not.
If I could interject, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I think the way to look at it, and maybe the applicant should answer this, but it is, it's a front yard for the, I think the drawing that, the color drawing that's up on the screen now, I think is correct. It's a front yard. So, for example, you know, certain restrictions that we have on what is allowed to go in front yards, you know, like, for example, you can't put a big shed in your front yard. You know, it'll be, it has to abide by any, that area of land would have to abide by any restrictions that are applicable to front yards. But this lot is able, they're able to satisfy the width without that tail. So, I mean, that, the tail is there merely for the middle of the lot area. And that's why when I mentioned in my comments that, you know, this is, you know, without trying to be pejorative or, you know, or say it's a positive or negative, it's a creative way to, because our code is, does not account for a condition like this. Our code perhaps could be altered and amended to try to, if we wanted to prevent things like this from happening, that's really a policy decision. But the issue is, you know, the code is, as applied to how they've drawn it, there's nothing in the ordinance that prevents people right now from drawing lots like this. Some other jurisdictions locally and nationally do have restrictions on how many jigs and jags and corners and appendages lots are allowed to have. Sometimes, they're very specific, but in our case, we do not have anything like that. If you can fit the area that's required in any kind of configuration and you meet the width, then you've created a lot. But I think in this case, so, you know, I think here, again, for me, it raises more the issue of, it's going to appear to most people that the lot is undersized. So, the average person who sees the lot, it's going to look like the house was built on a smaller lot than it should have been, because a chunk of it is being essentially, via easement, kind of given back to the, to Lot B1. So, you know, it's kind of, on paper, it meets, you know, checks all the boxes, but the end result, the end effect, as far as neighborhood character, scale, density, all that type of thing, it's going to appear that Lot B2 is undersized to most people, because they're not going to see that little dotted line on the map. They're not going to have that. They're just going to walk by, see the steps coming down from that house, and assume that the property line is a normal rectangle, when in fact, it's not. And so, I think that's the issue that it raises.
All right. Thanks for that. Ms. Weiss, do you have more questions?
I guess I'm just, I have a question about how far the front setback line should extend. Is it...
I think, yeah, and I think it's clear, I think it's clear that our code does not cover this configuration, and, you know, one interpretation is, as Mr. Krasner says, is the code doesn't explicitly reject this kind of configuration. I think Ms. Teetz would argue, yes, but this code does not support this. And as you pointed out, the definition of a front yard does not seem to apply to that little gray sliver due to the lack of it not extending to the front building line. So, I think we can get staff to weigh in one more time, but I think the answer is, it is unprecedented.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. And to add to Mr. Krasner's point, some jurisdictions sort of control this configuration by limiting the number of angles a lot line can make, and we don't have any explicit language in our code that would help us prevent these type of configurations, unfortunately, but it's not there. And so, Ms. Weiss, just to clarify, I'm going to, you've read it and I'll read it again, the definition for the front yard, if it helps you understand a little bit. Front yard means a yard extending from side lot line to side lot line. Yes, that would mean everything, that includes even the gray and then the full depth of the average yard, but then it's the second qualifier in that definition that comes after a comma that then excludes that gray portion from the front yard requirement, and that says between the front lot line and the front building setback line. So, in that sense, then, that gray area is just, like Mr. Krasner said, access land to meet the minimum lot area, but it's not really a front yard by definition, while visually, it is a front yard for somebody.
It's almost like it's not part of the lot.
Yep.
But they need it for the square footage. Do you have anything else, Ms. Weiss?
That's it. Thanks.
All right. Mr. Wodisco, what do you have?
I have nothing to add to this debate. You guys have covered it really well, between Ms. Teetz and Mr. Krasner debating all these different issues. I think it is creative, and I'm, at this point, going to support it just because I believe it, while the people, it's unprecedented, those who have looked at it quite carefully believe it meets the requirements. So, I don't have anything really to add or any questions that haven't already been answered.
All right. Thanks. I have a couple of things, and then I'll circle back, see if anybody else has any wrap-up comments. First of all, for those watching at home, just to be clear, and correct me if I'm wrong, but all this talk about the yard averaging, I think the primary impact is that as a result of the yard averaging that was applied since the initial application, the potential size of the new building has been reduced, therefore reducing the value of the subdivision. That's my understanding. It doesn't seem like the yard averaging is impacting whether or not this subdivision can occur or not, it's just affecting the size of the building that can be built. I wish our code was better. We face these things fairly regularly. You know, I think the city is getting to the point now where most subdivisions are going to have challenges like this, whether it's weird pipe stems or this sort of reverse pipe stem. We're not going to fix that now, but Mr. Stoddard, I'd love to make a note, let's add to some future agenda, how do we address these things? It sounds like other jurisdictions have ways of handling it, and we should too. My problem is, I think we all have sort of commented on this, even the folks that are supportive of it, is that the, you know, the spirit of the zoning code and all these requirements is to create, I think, a visual sort of appropriate feel to the neighborhood, and by essentially letting a subdivision get their square footage by taking a part of the yard from the neighboring lot that's not even really going to be theirs to use, will absolutely go against the spirit of the zoning, because you'll have, and it's particularly tough with this historic house, because you'll have this other house crammed in right between two houses in, you know, as Mr. Krasner said, you'll go by and you'll be like, how did that happen? That's weird. That, the front door of that other house comes right out of the street here, not realizing that's technically the side door and it's technically not their yard. So, if this were just a smell test, you'd say like, there's no way this can pass. I don't know, and this is a question I have for staff, but clearly, this is an interpretation thing. Usually, subdivisions are nice, because we can hem and haw, but at the end of the day, we have to approve them if they meet the specs and deny, we can deny them if they don't. Since this clearly, in my mind, is an interpretation, as Ms. Weiss says, what is that thing? It's not a front yard, it's not a side yard, it's a new yard, new defined piece of yard. So, I understand what the zoning administrator has said, and I understand Ms. Rusi's take, but if someone voted against this because their interpretation was that this wasn't a conforming subdivision, what is the, what is the risk there or what is the potential impact of that? Is that a question that Mr. Stoddard could answer?
Sure. I think, so, one, to your request, yes, we can get this added to a future agenda as a work session item to look at lot configuration, yard averaging. Also, I have been monitoring the plan at fallspurecva.gov email address, and there is one public comment, and I can provide that when you're ready. The question I think you asked was, is this an interpretation and what would that mean for the planning commission to vote one way or the other, and what would be the risk of denying? With any subdivision vote that's a denial, the commission does have to provide specific reasons for why it doesn't think the code requirements have been satisfied. I think Mr. Krasner's read on the situation is a good one, that yards help to define what you can and can't do with different pieces of property within a lot. So, there are more restrictions on a front yard than there are on a side yard, and there are more restrictions on a side yard than on a back, on a rear yard. So, I think in that respect, really, the front yard is the piece that touches to the right-of-way line, so I think it's fair to view this, as Mr. Krasner said, as a front yard. Front yards aren't required to extend all the way back to the lot restriction, to the building restriction line. You can see this commonly in any sort of lot that's trapezoidal, that if you add a lot where the lot lines were not square to the right-of-way line... add a lot where the lot lines were not square to the right-of-way line, uh, of course, there'd always be a triangle piece, uh, on, on one side or the other, that, that is not the full depth of the building restriction line. Um, so I think Mr. Krasner's read that it's a front yard is a good one. Um, and, uh, I think the shape of the lot explains why it's not as deep as the building restriction line, but that's not a requirement of the, of, of the lot shape.
All right. And now my next question, and Ms. Teetz touched on this a little bit, which is it's seen, it's hard for me to wrap my head around a house that has two front yards and three side yards, but no rear yard? And if the southwestern part of the Cherry Street frontage is to be considered a side yard, like we seem to be saying, wouldn't the adjacent yard then be a rear yard and therefore need a 40-foot setback? I don't understand how we can have, okay, we'll call that sliver side yard, doesn't that make the next section over a rear yard? By, by the definition, a, a rear yard means a yard extending across the full width of the lot from side lot line to side lot line between the rear lot line and the rear building setback line. And if the front door of this house faces East Jefferson, doesn't that make the other side of the house the rear of the house? I'm, I'm, I just don't see how we have three side yards.
Oh, yeah. So for corner lots, um, there, there is no rear yard requirement.
But this, this has, this has three, it has two sides, which means it has to have a back. It's not just under a corner lot because it's partially a corner lot, but it's partially not a corner lot.
We are talking about the historic property, right?
Yes, exactly.
B1. Yeah. So, um, how you arrive at the sideline, so you first defined the, the front yards and the, the Cherry side and the Jefferson side are the front and everything else would be a side because it doesn't have a required rear, rear yard? Does that answer the question?
No. I see a yard that, I see a yard that stretches from one side yard to the next side yard. And I assume that's either a front yard or a backyard and it looks like it must be a backyard because it doesn't front on anything.
So the, the definition of, um, all right, I'm getting my, uh, definition, let's hang on, one second. So, the definition of side yard means a yard extending from the front, I wish I could point with my finger, so this is difficult. So anyway, so side yard means a yard extending from the front yard to the rear yard between the side lot line and the near side building setback line. So that doesn't, that doesn't.
So how, so the part, the part of the B1 lot that is adjacent to the B2 lot, that's called a side yard, how does that extend to the front? It doesn't extend to the front.
So what I meant to, so what I meant to say is that that is not applicable front, for front, uh, for corner lots. So for front, uh, corner lots, um, that have no rear yards, the code says, the side yard shall be understood to extend from one front yard to the other front yard. So you define your two front yards, which is along Cherry and along Jefferson, then everything in between connecting those two yards then are side yards.
But, but one of those yards connects to another side yard, it doesn't?
It doesn't. So this continuous loop is, is, you can look at this continuous loop as one side yard.
But I guess, I guess the fact that a third or more, almost half of the lot, does not have a front yard, it's not a corner lot, it, it, half the lot's a corner lot and the other half is, is a, is an interior lot because it has an adjacent lot between it and the street. I can see it.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, this is why I'm saying it's open to interpretation. We can look at these definitions. I, I think it would be hard for anyone to say like, oh, these definitions clearly say that this is a, that these yards can be what they are and the, and they can all go together. It, it clearly isn't. It's open for interpretation. And for me, then I fall back on the, okay, what is the spirit of the zoning? And the spirit of the zoning is to create enough space for houses in this zoned area to, to exist in conjunction with each other. And I'll know, you know, we keep talking about how the HARB, you know, approved this and they did, but one of the comments made was the frustration that the code doesn't allow HARB to have any kind of preview of the subdivisions that, that can see if it affects the historic structure, which this, by being there. So I think that, I appreciate the understanding how, how the interpretation was made, but I don't, I don't personally find it, uh, super convincing. Like I'm still finding myself like, I'm worried we're setting, inadvertently setting a precedent that could be abused in, in other areas. And I'm curious about Ms. Teetz's suggestion of a variance being a more appropriate solution to this.
If I may, if I may, can, can I be heard?
Yeah, sure, Mr. Lasso, go ahead.
I, I, I think we have to be careful, uh, because, that we don't stray into saying something is an interpretation because it is unusual. This, uh, this is an unusual situation. Uh, you can't be, you can't have a lot that is both an interior lot and a quarter lot, it's one or the other. This is a corner lot. Um, it, it is often the case, uh, when doing infill subdivisions, and I've had only a few where the, uh, the, the, the area of the lot lacks the minimum required lot area. And, uh, for the same reasons you have here, you have an existing building. Oftentimes, the ones I've been involved with, you pick up extra land in the rear of the house. It's just because that's often where it is and it look, and they take the oddest of shapes. And Mr. Krasner is also correct that some jurisdictions don't allow that. Falls Church does allow it. Um, and so in this situation, um, the extra area was picked up, if you will, uh, along Cherry Street. The code doesn't prohibit it, therefore it is allowed. That is the letter of the law. Uh, and so it's important that we stick to the letter of the zoning code. And if it meets the letter of the zoning code, then it must be applied, the zoning code must be applied. If we have policy questions for the future or concerns about historic ordinance and the intent or spirit, uh, those are all well taken, but that doesn't stand in the way of the subdivision. That is something you'll have to deal with, uh, in the future. And so I think in some ways, uh, you'll, you can and probably should look at that. This happens to be an area of the city that is, uh, has a substantial number of still existing Victorian era properties. Uh, and in this case, Barb and Steve are able to, uh, do what many homeowners have done and they've respected the incredible contribution they've made to a house. I don't know who else would have committed to do what they did over the years than what Barb and Steve did. So here it is, it meets the zoning code. If you have, uh, concerns, you'll just have to deal with those in the future. Uh, you can call that easement area a part of the front yard if you want. There are plenty of front yards that are oddly shaped. Uh, I worked in Arlington on a property not long ago, uh, where it was almost a pie shape and the neighbor's lot, uh, just because of the way they drew it in order to get adequate, uh, land area, the neighbor's lot ended up being on a diagonal so that it was in front visually of the house we were representing. And so over the years, the owner of the, that we represented was taking care of the land, but the house next door got sold. The new owner came in and said, I own that land, don't use that land in front of the house. So we had to do what is really being done here. We created an easement over the area, uh, so visually it all worked out. But we have to stick to the letter of the zoning code, this meets the letter of the zoning code, the subdivision process is a ministerial process, that's why the staff mentioned that here. Uh, and this really ought to be approved and these other issues, um, can be done later and we'd be happy to assist in that. But, uh, that's our view of the situation.
Yeah.
Uh, this is Antoinette, sorry, can, may I also add something?
Yeah, definitely.
So I, I wanted to just provide some clarification. So when we, you know, first draft up subdivisions and how they can be split up, we do follow requirements of the subdivision ordinance. And typically what happens is that setbacks are a result of the lots that are created, which I think is what, is the point that, um, Mr. Krasner had made, that the setbacks are based on the lots that exist. So, um, you know, in the definitions and the zoning ordinance, the front lot line is, are any line separating the lot from a street upon which it fronts. On a corner lot or a double frontage lot, each lot line that separates the lot from a street shall be considered a front lot line. So that's why you have two front lot lines because there's one on Cherry Street and one on East Jefferson. And then, um, it also says, under the rear lot line definition, that on a corner lot or double frontage lot, there shall not be a rear lot line. So that's why there isn't a rear lot line here, since it meets the definition of the corner lot. And then additionally, for a side lot line, it says, any lot line other than a front or rear lot line. So essentially all those, although the two side lot lines tie in together, any lot line that's not a front lot line on this lot is considered a side lot line.
Yeah. Thank you. And I, like I said, I understand the interpretation you guys are making and I know Mr. Lasso doesn't want me to refer to as an interpretation, but part of my job is to get applications and interpret them as I see them. So for, for me, um, yes, I understand that definition and on a normal corner lot, that makes total sense. Um, but just so, since we're talking about this, you know, Ms. Teetz mentioned this, could that gray, um, um, extend all the way to like one inch from East Jefferson Street? Would that conform to the zoning code? Assuming the square footage worked out? It, it, does, does the code define how much of the street frontage there needs to be on a lot for it to be considered a?
No, actually it doesn't. It's, it, it, it says it needs to front on a lot, uh, public street, but it, it doesn't say how much. Hypothetically, probably, I think I, I remember looking at this in the past and how far that line could shift down. Um, probably would still meet the requirement if it meets the minimum lot width. Again, it's a hypothetical situation, I'd have to look at it deeply.
All right. Um, yeah, because I think that, to me, that's the problem with the definitions that are being cited is they are, you know, the debt, that one definition you had about the corner lot and everything, the problem is that we have a, a yard that does not, does not connect to the front lot line. So, Mr. Lasso, I, I know what you're gonna say, I understand, but it's, in my interpretation, I would say, well, that's, that's not, that's not what the code is saying.
I was only going to say, you can't extend, you, you still have to have a minimum lot width for a corner lot. So if the Cherry Street frontage of the historic property is the front yard, it's got to have a minimum lot width. That prevents that easement area from going within it, as you said in your example, to within an inch of Jefferson Street.
Do you know what that lot width requirement would be?
Seventy-five feet.
Seventy, yeah, seventy-five feet.
Do we know what it is?
Well, just eyeballing it, it looks like it must be about 90 feet or more.
All right. All right. Um, yeah, I don't know, I, I just, I find these things, uh, you know, frustrating because, um, and I, and I get it, right? The code is written, as you said, Mr. Lasso, that it's not, um, disallowed and it's by default allowed. And I suspect because of the way staff and the zoning administrator have interpreted this, that that's, that's probably the conclusion we'll come to. It's unfortunate because it clearly in my mind isn't the intent of the zone, zoning in this area in particular with that historic house, which, uh, I'm an owner of a historic house and I'm sure Barb has done a much better job keeping her house up, but I understand the challenges and, and I, you know, it's a beautiful lot and house and it'll be, it'll be sad to go by in the future and have it not be as, as lovely. But, um, yeah, I think that's my main thing is like, I'd love to get this cleared up in the future, Paul, so we, we don't have that. So how about this? Give us the public comment and then I'll circle back to see if anyone has follow-up comments.
Sure. The, uh, one public comment I received is from Aaron Donofrio, uh, at 210 East Jefferson Street in Falls Church, Virginia. Uh, she writes, "Good evening, can you please provide additional specifics on the parking spot that was noted for the 212 East Jefferson House on Jefferson Street? Where exactly will the spot be located? Thank you."
I'm sure the applicant can talk about that. I think it was on one of the.
Yeah, it's on, um.
Just they cut off what's there now.
It's on the plat submission, um, on one of the, in our presentation.
I think it's even on what's on the screen right now, if we scroll down a little bit, it's just adjacent to the walkway. But it's cut off here on what I'm seeing. I don't know.
So it's the box, sorry, I can't point either. So it's the box that's off of East Jefferson Street there.
Right. And that's, there's a grade there, so that'll be cut into the small hill, I assume, or?
Yes. And any, um, in actual like construction of that parking pad will need to go through like a permitting, so.
Okay. All right. Um, thank you for that quick answer. I think that covered the question. Um, so quickly, I will, uh, I'll just open up if, if anyone, any planning commissioners have any comments on you identified.
I do, it's more so, Teetz.
All right.
Um, you know, I think I've been listening to everyone speak and some of the things that really came out in my mind was, when we look at subdivisions, we're supposed to be very conservative and very rigid. We're not supposed to, we're supposed to look at what the rules are, what the code is and be very careful, like be careful with it. And, um, I just find it really hard to hear things like it is what it is and it's uncharted territory, because that doesn't seem to me like we're being very conservative and very careful here. I understand what Mr. Krasner is saying, but, you know, they kept saying, look at illustration two. If you look at illustration two, you look at the front lot line definition, you look at the front yard definition. I just don't think this meets those definitions. I think if you read them as they're written in a conservative manner, as we should, I don't think this lot meets it. I, and again, I would just say that if we want to do something like this, that this needs to go to the BTA as a variance. I don't think this is something that our code really allows without a variance. And, um, you know, that, that's just, that, you know, I looked at this all weekend long and there's just no way that I feel confident that this, our code allows for this.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Teetz, anyone else with any other comments?
Yeah, this is Tim.
Go ahead, Ms. Stevens.
Just one kind of final comment. Uh, I thought gerrymandering only applied to political situations, but I guess it also applies to zoning codes. Uh, I kind of feel like, uh, listening to everything, that the, uh, interpretation on the part of the staff and, and others kind of lead in the direction of approval. Uh, I don't like the outcome. This is yet another example where a subdivision does not seem to lead to a result that's in the, uh, city's interest, but I feel that the solution here is legislative, not, uh, something that, that we can accomplish here. There you have it.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? I did have one quick comment, which I don't think will affect anything, but, you know, the HARB approval did talk about not just removing the portion of the, the newer, modern addition, but also restoring the, you know, making it look normal. I assume they will do that, so I'm not too worried about it. But I, I noticed that in our motion, we only talk about it being removed or demolished, we don't talk about what it'll end up looking like. I'm not too worried about it. Um, all right. If we don't have any other comments, I know there was, um, some talk about tweaking the motion. I don't know if anyone is up for making the motion, but, um, unless we have any other comments and no more public comment, I think we're ready for a motion.
This is brought up, I'll make, I'll make the motion. And I'm going to do a hybrid of the, within the staff report and then the comments from, uh, from the public. Whereas the proposed subdivision meets all applicable requirements of the city's subdivision and zoning ordinances as they are currently applied in practice, and the proposed subdivision is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan, now therefore I move that the planning commission grant preliminary plat approval of a subdivision plat dated March 9, 2020, attachment two of 20, 212 East Jefferson Street and to propose lots 13B1 and 13B2, subject to the following conditions. One, a final plat along with a preliminary plat updated to include the following deed restrictions shall be submitted for approval of this subdivision and a draft D document that includes this restriction shall be submitted for staff review and approval prior to recordation of the subdivision. Then, the owners on behalf of themselves and their successors and/or assigns, and/or assigns hereby, sorry, let me read that again. The owners on behalf of themselves and/or the successors and/or assigns hereby covenant assigns hereby covenant that, ugh, hang on. Yeah, that's, okay. Last one. The owners on behalf of themselves and their successors and/or assigns hereby covenant that until portions of the nonhistoric rear addition of the historic house on Lot 13-B1 currently existing on the property are completely removed or demolished, neither the owners nor any of their successors or assigns shall, one, construct any new structures on lots 13B1 or 13B2 created by this subdivision, or, two, convey lots 13B1 or 13B2 to other purchasers unless all of lots 13B1 and 13B2 are conveyed together to a single purchaser. Covenant shall run with the land and be binding on all persons owning lots 13B1 and 13B2 and any of their successors or assigns until the existing identified nonhistoric additions to the historic structure on the property are removed or demolished.
Thank you. Before I ask for a second, does anyone have any comments about the motion? There was some talk about whether or not include the currently applied and practiced comment. Mr. Krasner?
I mean, my only comment was, maybe this will be picked up at final. I still would like to see that that label and note added regards to the easement as it's shown. I mean, I think that can be corrected for the final. I don't know if it needs to be, maybe it should be a condition, you know, if we can add it as a condition, that the easement that's shown as a hatched area on the preliminary plat be labeled with an explanatory note added, identifying its purpose.
I would support adding that to the motion. It sounds like they have it ready to go.
Okay. So if the maker of the motion will, yeah, well, you're the second, right? So if you want to, you guys will. Wait, do we have a second yet? No, we don't have a second?
We don't.
Alright. Well, can I second it? And then that's my, with that friendly amendment to the motion?
Yes, alright. Mr. Pointez, do you accept Mr. Krasner's friendly amendment to your motion?
Accepted.
Alright, so we've got a motion in a second, and I'm sure Ms. Bazemore, we can get that exact language from Mr. Krasner later, but at this point, unless there's any other questions or comments, I will take a roll call vote.
Alright, Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
No.
Mr. Wadiska?
Yes.
Mr. Pointez?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
No.
Thank you.
Alright, got that one done. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate all the hard work on that. It sounds like we'll get a final sometime down the road. Moving on, our next action. Yeah, thanks. And you guys don't have to stick around for this meeting if you don't want to. Next item, 6B, the NVTA six-year program update. Mr. Stotter, do you have something to say? Well, this sounds like the action item here is to send them a support.
I do, and there is a brief staff report for this. The item before the Planning Commission, you're correct, is for the Planning Commission to approve, to endorse a letter of recommendation to the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, the NVTA, on two grant applications that the city has prepared and submitted for funding. But before I tell the whole story, I will turn it over to the lead staff member, Ms. Carrie Odenino, who can provide a summary of the applications. I'll turn it over. Carrie?
Hi, thank you Chair Rankin and members of the Planning Commission for the opportunity to speak tonight. So the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority Fiscal Year 2020 to 2025 Six-Year Program Update is underway. And the city submitted two applications as part of the 2024 through 2025 Call for Projects. The West Falls Church Access to Transit and Multimodal Connectivity Project and the Downtown Falls Church Multimodal Improvements Project. A flyer with more information about the applications is attached, as is a draft letter of support for the city's applications. So the West Falls Church Connection to WNOD Trail application involves the installation of a new ten-foot multi-use path and six-foot planting strip along Shreve Road between the WNOD Trail and Route 7, with acorn-style lights, a crosswalk near the intersection of Shreve Road and Gordon Road, and benches near the entrance to the WNOD Trail. The Downtown Falls Church Multimodal Improvements Project application involves the installation of two mid-block crossings, sidewalk widening, and the removal of obstructions, including utility lines, the installation of curb extensions, adjustment of intersection geometry, and increasing visibility at six crossings and intersections on Park Avenue between North Washington Street and Virginia Avenue. So the benefits of these projects include increased safety, connectivity, and access to multimodal transportation options. And these projects will help deliver the city's transportation goals of meeting increasing travel demand without increasing automobile volume as adopted in Mobility for All Modes and the NVTA's goal of reducing congestion in the region. If approved, work on the projects could begin in fiscal year 2024 with project delivery in fiscal year 2026 for the West Falls Church Connection to WNOD Trail Project and delivery for the Downtown Multimodal Improvements Project in fiscal year 2028. So the draft letter of support is attached, and I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Alright, thanks for that presentation. I'll do the same thing. I'll run through quickly and see if anybody has any comments. Mr. Krasner? Any quick thoughts on this one? Seems like a no brainer.
No, no comments. Sorry.
That's alright. I'll go quickly. So feel free to unmute quickly, everybody. Mr. Pointez, you have thoughts?
No, thank you.
Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, very quickly, these are, these are good projects on my command staff on it. The one issue that occurred to me as I was reading through this is that we covered the upfront cost, which of course is the, what we're requesting the grant for, but we don't address the ongoing maintenance costs to the Department of Public Works. And I think it would be good, just in general, to make a stab at that, so that kind of truth and disclosure, we know what the full cost to the city is, that it's not just free. But outside, that's just a minor point. I think these are excellent projects and I fully support the commission sending the letter.
Alright, thank you. Ms. Teetz?
I think it's a great letter and I'm happy about all the projects.
Sounds good. Ms. Weiss?
No comments.
Alright, Mr. Wadiska?
Yeah, this is, as you mentioned, a complete no-brainer. These are fantastic projects. Just one minor thing on this letter. In the second paragraph, it's like the fourth line. It says, "Also, this will help with economic growth, development of the new high school, and reduce congestion, etc." This "development of the new high school" line seemed really out of sync to me. I don't know what we're referring to. It'll have been done. We're not trying to grow it any larger. I'm not, I mean, it's access to the new high school, but "development" seems like the wrong word.
Yes, although my name is attached, I did not draft it. But that's a good question. If we mean development of the new high school site, like the economic development, or if we mean access to the new high school, which it clearly would be very beneficial for that. But I'm sure this Odenino can tweak that before we send it out. My quick comments are, it's interesting, both these projects, because with the quarantine, I've been home a lot with the kids, and my twelve-year-old daughter especially, she has limited mobility. She can walk, but she's not, can't cover big distances. And I recently got a bike that she can ride on the back of, and the other day we rode up the bike path and we got to basically Shreve, and I looked down, I said, man, we're so close to Lazy Mikes. There's no chance we're going to bike down to Lazy Mikes or here, we'll die. So this first project would obviously help with that, getting to Lazy Mikes, getting to the high school site, up to the metro, that'll be outstanding. And then my other experience with theirs, we got this sort of industrial strength stroller for her, so we can go on these long walks. And it's unbelievable how hard it is to get around certain places with all these stupid utility poles in the sidewalks, so anything we can do to clear that up, it's very beneficial. So I think both of these are a huge plus, and I think maybe just tweak that one line in there to clarify what we mean about high school, and it'll be good to go. I'll happily sign it. Sound good?
Great, I can definitely change the wording there.
Great. Thanks for your work on this. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, I think it would be helpful to get a motion on the record.
Alright, yeah. Let's get a quick motion and we'll even vote on it real quick. How about that?
Mr. Chair, I'm as suggested.
I second. Our Russ can second.
Alright, we'll get a motion from Mr. Stevens and a second from Mr. Wadiska. I guess we'll just do a quick roll call vote, because it's confusing. Otherwise, if you could do that, Ms. Bazemore, that'd be great.
Alright, Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wadiska?
Yes.
Mr. Pointez?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss? Thank you.
Alright, thanks a lot. Moving right along, item 7A, Planning Commissioners Reports. I'm sure you guys have been going to a bunch of meetings or not. I don't have a report, but does anyone have anything to report? Just speak up, we'll sort it out.
This is Ross. I have a really small report. I can take no credit for it, but have been involved in these EDA meetings related to the grant, and I hope people have been following what's been going on. And they recently announced, I think it was today even, that eighty-four different companies that met the criteria that was discussed and worked on extensively, because I was, I didn't, I was listening in on the discussion, it was drafted by others. But they had specific criteria that was debated at great length, and eighty-four companies met that, and they just, I think they're about to distribute, they've made the choice and are about to distribute the funds in the near future, so. It's a wonderful program. I think it was really a wonderful thing that the EDA did, and I commend all of their efforts and the hard work they put in.
Thank you for that. Any other reports?
Yeah, this is Tim, just very briefly, the, it's not often get really, really, the State General did this issue, a couple of very extensive pieces on energy.
Can folks mute?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, we're getting some echo, Tim. Someone who isn't speaking should mute, but I think we're good now. Thanks.
I was going to say, there are two pieces of legislation that were positive for the city. One is the Virginia Clean Economy Act, and it will help reduce greenhouse gas emissions, which the city does have goals to reduce these over time. And the second is an act called the Solar Freedom Bill, and I actually did have involvement with that, and that will make it easier to put solar systems on our rooftops, including our high school. That's it.
Excellent, thank you. I think I saw Ms. Teetz on mute. Do you have a report?
Yeah, I do. Just that Rexon Park is working on the Master Park Plan for Fellows Park, the one, the park that's going to be across from Thomas Jefferson on Oak Street. And we were supposed to have had, really, I think, two public meetings by now on the Master Park Plan, but that hasn't been able to happen, obviously. So there is a survey out. If you haven't seen it, send me an email individually, and I can send you a link for it. But there is a survey out right now to try to get a feel from the public what type of use they want to see at that park. And, you know, like, what kind of facilities, that kind of thing. Also, I just want to mention, well, not mention, because I have a question for staff, kind of. So VEPIS had our meeting, I guess, last week, and we did put a letter together for the NVTA grant. So there's a letter going out from VEPIS on that. And then the WNOD Dual Path Project came up, you know, so we didn't get to have a public meeting for it, but we had had previous ones. And while reviewing the plan, VEPIS had a couple of questions for staff, and perhaps Paul, Mr. Stotter, you could answer it. One, they weren't sure that they saw area for the plazas left for the Walter Mess and Veterans Commons. It didn't seem clear from the plans that there would be the space for those two. The other thing is they were concerned about tree loss, but I, you know, I walked that part of the trail. Most of what's there is invasive, so I think that that's not that big of a deal. But they were concerned about some larger trees going down. But I don't think there's anything large in there, because it wouldn't be allowed in that easement. And the other thing they were concerned about was the Elwood Street bench and shelter, which looks like it's going to be removed. And so I guess there was a question as if staff would support maybe VEPIS going to Nova Parks and asking if we can move it somewhere else, rather than have it destroyed. So anyway, so that's, Mr. Stotter, so that's my question to you. Do you know, I mean, I know you planned out these plazas, so I'm assuming that they're still there.
That is correct. So I've been involved, obviously, in the design of the park for quite a time, and I'm glad other folks were interested in getting those plazas improved. The Walter Mess Plaza and the Veterans Common, both great civic efforts, and there is a note in the plan sheets where the general areas for those plazas would be. The intent through the Dual Trails Project was always to make sure that Nova Parks, as the landowner and manager of the park, takes the lead on getting the dual trails in the right spot, and then allowing for the city or the community to come in after the fact and update the plazas. And so that's why the note on the plan sheets is general, because the specific design and the exact placement of the plazas is still to be determined. The second comment was about tree loss. The plans have been reviewed by the city's arborist staff, and they're satisfied with the level of tree removal. As you mentioned, Commissioner Teetz, there are restrictions on the size and the heights and the types of trees that can be planted along the WNOD because of the easements that exist to protect the power lines that run along the park. There was a nice write-up, that's something that's touched on in the director's report. If folks didn't see it, Nova Parks did do a nice write-up in the Falls Church News Press recently about the design of the park and how they landed on the configuration that they did. The third question was about the covered bench, the shelter. Shaded seating is something that is identified as a need in the WNOD, in the WNOD Park, in the city's master plan. And I think that would be a great idea for VEPIS to reach out to Nova Parks about potentially relocating that shelter. One, because shaded seating is important, and two, it's important to remember the folks that have contributed to the community.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I'll pass that information on to the board.
Alrighty, anyone else with a report? Alright, in terms of correspondence, the one thing I saw was related to that shelter and bench, which I agree, they should, I think they should try to work with the park people to get that sorted out. I didn't see any other correspondence. Mr. Stotter, do you have a, I guess, brief director's report?
I do have a brief report. So first up in the list is the official sort of publishing of the 2019 Community Profile. It's called 2019 because it's a summary of what occurred in that calendar year. It takes us a few months to pull it together, and that's why we publish in 2020. But similar to the past two profiles, it provides summary on major public and private investments that are continuing throughout the city. This year's report, I should note, was pulled together by Jeff Holler and Emily Bazemore. So thank you to them for carrying this forward, and of course, with support from staff from numerous departments. It is a similar format to last year's, where it focuses on that vision statement that's included in the city's comprehensive plan for where the city wants to be in the year 2040. It rolls through, as I said, a summary of investments that have been made in the community in the past year. There's then a page of information about each of the eight community values that are specified in that city vision. And then lastly, as always, we include a new map.
Uh, and then lastly, uh, as always, we include a new map uh in the profile. Emily, I don't know if we're able to pull up the the map in the back of the profile. Uh, last year's talked about uh transportation options throughout the city. Uh, this year speaks to the uh, the economic power of uh the city of Falls Church as well as the Greater Falls Church area uh in terms of the, just the amount of, the number of households and the amount of household income that exists.
Yeah, that was a pretty cool map.
The uh, it looks like, Emily, it looks like you're jumping to it now.
There you go.
Uh, and for Greater Falls Church, we tried to use uh an area of about three miles around the city. Um, I think that's generally the area where people um will either think they live, well, they they do live in Falls Church and Greater Falls Church. Uh, but that's also the area where sometimes people confuse which jurisdiction they live in. Um, and so uh, this map is really just trying to highlight, you know, this is, this is the economic area uh that people really associate with uh the city of Falls Church. Uh, let's see, uh, keeping it brief, uh, just to update the commission, you all previously reviewed the Oak Street Bridge and provided some comments. Uh, the plan sets are being provided to you as an, as an update on that item. Uh, no action is required. Uh, W N O D dual trails, as I mentioned, uh, Nova Parks took out a full-page ad uh in the Falls Church News Press recently. Uh, and then Columbia Baptist site work uh has begun uh for the recently approved site plan for the Columbia Baptist Church. Uh, and that work will be uh ongoing.
Sounds good. And I, I made a mistake. We did have a few letters from Vipis. If anyone wanted to talk about those, we we can go back to correspondence. They had a comment about public art, about the West End Park easement for the Washington Gas work, and also some comments about the wayfinding program that I think the EDA is, you're hitting. Anybody feel like you want to talk about those?
I mean, I could run through them. Um, you know, Mr. Stevens and I were there for these letters and um, although I think that both of us, except for the NVTA, had abstained from it because it had issues related to the Plenary Commission. But, so the public art is, they were just kind of concerned in the process for approval for the mural for Brown's Park. And um, pointing out some other areas where um, public art, because, you know, we are working on a public art process, but it hasn't been completed. And um, the EDA's feeling was that that was a private wall, so therefore didn't have to go through the public art process, and Vipis suggested since city funds were being used to pay for it, it probably should have gone through a public process. So that's basically what that letter is about. The other letter was supporting the NVTA grant. The West End Park easement letter, um, you know, we all discussed the West Park easement. I don't think any of us were so totally happy about having to put that easement in the park. And um, so they were just talking about like that, they think the city needs to be more careful about, you know, putting these different easements in a park. And right, right after that, we heard about the um new easement that was going to have to be done in big chimneys. Because that was for a lot, um, electric line that was already in big chimneys, but had to be moved. So, and the wayfinding signs. Um, I don't know if everyone's seen that um presentation on the wayfinding signs. So there's a little concern. The biggest concern, I think, was, and and Mr. Stevens can correct me if I missed anything on on these letters. The biggest thing was that the Little City logo is going to be much bigger than the the city of Falls Church. That that the larger portion of the entry signs to the city should say City of Falls Church, and the logo should be the smaller sign. That it would be more important to to make sure people knew what city they were entering than the logo itself with other, which some people might not recognize. So that, that was basically it. I don't know if Mr. Stevens, you want to add anything to those letters?
Yeah, I think you've covered it well. The only thing I would amplify a little bit is the uh notion of uh public art in Mr. Brown's Park. I think by far the, most people, when they see the murals, are going to think that's public art, but uh, I'm not sure they'll say, well, it's on a private wall, so it's not, not public art. So that's something I think we probably, uh, the city should address in in some form.
Yes. Alright.
I had one other question too, on the um, uh, community profile report. I guess this is for Paul, real quick. Is that something that you're asking for comments on, or is this a staff report and it's pretty much a completed?
Uh, this is done as an administrative publication. Um, of course, if people have comments, uh, we always want to make uh next year, next year's profile better. Um, uh, so if there is anything we can add, uh, we're happy to do that.
Right. Well, the uh, one of the indicators uh was the city's tracking of greenhouse gas emissions was not. Don't want to make it look like we are climate deniers here in Falls Church. We take climate change seriously.
Yeah, that's certainly something we can add.
Thank you.
Alright, Paul, I kind of cut you off. Did you finish your director's report?
Oh, yes, that, that was the end of my report. Thank you.
Alright, moving on into work session land, we have something we all love, a subdivision. Uh, for five fifteen East Broad Street. Is there a presentation on this, Paul?
Uh, there is. Uh, as you mentioned, this is a work session item, so there is no proposed action for tonight. Uh, instead, this is intended to uh brief the planning commission, um, give uh and uh provide an opportunity for the planning commission staff and the applicant to to have a conversation about the uh, the application before it comes before you for action. Um, with that, I'll turn it over to Gary Fuller, uh, who is the lead staff on the application.
Good evening. Uh, tonight, uh, we wanted to have this work session um on the preliminary and final draft plots for this proposed subdivision. Um, I just wanted to note in the attachments, there were, was a second submission uh that was included um after the package had gone out, just so you'd have that information, but that this staff report and my comments this evening will address the first submission. And um, so we'll look at the first submission. If, Emily, you could bring up um uh, attachment eight A dash eight, final plot for submission, please. Um, in the meantime, um, and in terms of the second submission, the sequence and labeling of the lot numbers has changed, so while the staff report uh will address the first submission. The subject property is located at five one five East Broad, and that's between Nolan and Buxton Road. Uh, Nolan Street, it's in the Broadmont neighborhood. It's a just over a one acre property with existing one-story house built in nineteen fifty-one. Uh, the property is zone R one A, low-density residential, and contains um one point one acres or uh forty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety square feet of land. So it's a good-sized parcel for the city. We don't see a lot of subdivisions of this size. The um subdivision is, uh, there's two existing lots that I I mentioned are in zone R one A, lot C four, and then lot D. And the idea is to um, there's enough uh acreage to subdivide those into four buildable lots, and they would be labeled one, two, three, and four, and the existing house will be removed for the future construction of the new homes. Uh, staff analysis of the subdivision, uh, there would be a consolidation of the two lots and then a re-subdivision uh, the existing R one A lots, um, as I mentioned, lot D and and C four, and you would create four new lots. The two lots in the rear, lots two and three, are proposed as pipe stems and would be served by a fifteen-foot wide shared driveway, as would the two frontage lots, lots one and four with um on-street uh access. And there would be just one apron for the entire subdivision. Staff reviewed the preliminary and final plots. Um, they're, they're attached and issued comments to the applicant in a letter dated April twenty-seventh. That's attachment four. And staff provided several recommendations to assist the applicant's engineer in revising the preliminary and final plots that were mainly uh labeling um types of items. There were a few specific staff comments. Uh, DPW Public Works is requiring all four lots to be served by the one driveway, which will also serve as the pipe stem, um, because there's a couple of existing um curb cuts and aprons at this point. So those will be vacated and there'll be one established for all four lots. Uh, a deed of recordation would also be provided um along with the subdivision for the um shared uh pipe stem driveway. Uh, in addition, um, notes on the final plot will be required reflecting uh these staff comments and others, uh, including sprinkling uh requirements for the two pipe stem lots uh by the fire marshal and so forth. So we'll be looking for those um for the final plots that'll come before you in the future. The um staff valuation, the zoning requirements related to the minimum setbacks, lot width, and lot area are provided in the staff report as listed in lines one oh six to one sixty-two. Uh, indicated all the zoning requirements were met. Um, the required setbacks for lots one and four, which are considered interior lots. Uh, these are the two frontage lots, and they they meet all required setbacks. The rear lots two and three are pipe stem lots, and the minimum yard um shall be equal to the abutting minimum yard for one-family dwellings on the abutting property or the minimum yard required by these regulations, whichever is greater. And the subdivision's been designed uh with that criteria met. There, there's no public comments at this point. We haven't sent out Jason Property Owner notices because at this point, um, you know, we're, we're having a work session to give you orientation to this, and we'll be scheduling this for um final action in June, either the June third or seventeenth meeting, um, based on the status of the final plots in the, in the coming days. Uh, the applicant is uh online with us, with his engineer. Um, I'll, I'll let them introduce themselves, and if they have any opening comments or any, any sort of presentation, and I'll let them uh proceed with that, and then we'll open it to the public. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Fuller.
Hi, this is Adam Bean with Green Built Homes and Celebrity Homes. I'm uh with my engineer, Kayvon Jabari. And we're here on Mr. Fuller's invitation to provide any answers we can to any questions. The plot, I think, speaks for itself that we're creating four uh conforming lots under the subdivision code. And uh, again, we're here to answer any questions you may have. Thanks for your time tonight.
Alright, well, thanks for joining us. I'm going to do the same thing I did before. I'm going to run through everybody one by one and then circle back. So starting with Mr. Krasner, questions or comments? He's, I'm sure he's reaching for the mute button on his tablet.
Sorry.
That's alright.
I don't know if I have any questions. I mean, I guess the only thing I would, I mean, you know, obviously, this lot being this size, which, which is somewhat unique, that we don't have too many acre parcels uh in the city. Um, I just wonder if something more, you know, creative wasn't contemplated here. I mean, you know, right now, the way these homes would be oriented, I mean, it's, you know, sort of typical. Um, you know, it's, it's kind of the simple, simplest way to carve them up. I mean, it doesn't really give these folks much of a sense of community. You know, living on East Broad, obviously, and you're, you know, you're on a busy street, and having the frontage on East Broad, you know, I, I think, you know, so for the traditional house, it was set so far back. I mean, it gave them some separation from the traffic and um, and and a lot of the traditional older properties on the street, you know, have a different character. I mean, these homes would be newer, obviously. I just wonder if there wasn't some, some thought at, um, and I don't know if you've talked, looked at how you might orient these houses, but um, you can kind, you can almost create a little court back in here. I mean, where you'd have four people that would at least have some sense of community in here, instead of having it kind of in the typical arrangement that you've done. You know, I mean, I have, I don't know how many other alternative layouts you've played around with um, before you settled on this one. But I mean, my, my overall comment is that it's, I mean, there's not much I can really say other than it's kind of your standard, you know, we don't love pipe stems. We know the ordinance allows them. Um, but given that you're on, you know, East Broad, you know, and you have an acre, um, you know, was there any thought to doing something maybe a little more out of the box, a little more interesting, and and still giving you your four lots at the end of the day, but maybe something that might, you know, be better for the folks that will ultimately live here. Um, other than, you know, giving them just, giving them their, their brand-new house, maybe they get a better kind of environment to live in every day. So that's my question and comment for the applicant.
The, the requirement of a, I guess you're proposing a ci- city-owned street coming back into the property.
It could be private, could be a little private court. I mean, there are a lot of options you could, you could look at. I'm, I'm asking you what other options you might have looked at.
Well, we certainly wanted to pick an option. Yeah, we certainly tried to pick an option that would conform to the, this, the code, and this one does. The, the uh creation of some type of cul-de-sac um seemed to complicate matters uh and be unnecessary. Uh, the, the lot sizes are very generous, and we're hoping to position the two front lot, front homes uh quite a bit off the street, sixty to seventy feet is sort of uh, I think, very doable. So that will help to uh minimize the, the street impact of those homes. Um, and again, we wanted to pick something that would certainly conform and and not have any complications on getting through the process. So we've done that here. In a pipe stem subdivision, all homes are required to face Broad Street. So we don't have the option to face them in any other orientation under the current code. So, um, that I don't.
Well, I know, and that's why I, I thought about other, and and again, you know, I understand. Um, but I mean, again, given the amount of land that you have to work with here, I just wonder if there weren't other alternative layouts that um might be different. I mean, maybe this is the best it can be, but um, you know, from our perspective, I, again, I, I know there's the, you know, the minimum requirements in the subdivision, and and if you meet that, you can subdivide. But I'm saying, I'm just encouraging you. It's more of a recommendation than a mandate. It's more of a recommendation to think about, you have an opportunity with an acre in the city, which is somewhat rare, um, to, you know, maybe carve out a little um community there that might be a more pleasant place for those folks to live. Um, since, you know, again, they are on East Broad. So that's, that's my comment. Um, that's my, that's kind of my, my, my observation. Otherwise, you know, it does appear to meet the the minimum requirements in the, in the, in the zone. Um, so, yeah.
Uh, this is Gary Fuller. Uh, I have a couple of follow-ups to that.
Go for it, Gary.
Uh, in terms of some of the things that really um kind of affected this lot is if you look at lot uh four, which is the right lower one on the frontage, um, soon as the building envelope ends, it's a forty-foot side yard running all the way back on the east side of the lot, all the way to the back. And then across the back of the entire lot is another forty foot. And then you have running through the center due to pipe stems in the rear. You've got a, a two forty-foot front yards for the pipe stems and two forty-foot rear yards for the um front lots. And then on the church side, you, you only have a, on the west, a fifteen-foot side yard. But so you've got a lot of setbacks happening due to the adjacent properties. Um, the other, other thing is the um, the requirement that you um have a front door facing the street um is a criteria that's in the subdivision code. It was added in recent years. There is a waiver provision for that from the planning commission for specific reasons, but at this point, you know, all those homes were designed purposefully um to meet that requirement as well. Um, ideally, you know, if you could put some cottages in here and, and, you know, have them facing inward to a large extent, that would be nice. Um, but, you know, the zoning and the, the size don't lend to that under the code, and I think the developer is just looking to, you know, he's, he has this under contract and wants to uh subdivide it and move forward. Thank you.
So actually, Gary, you raised a good question. You mentioned the cottages. I wasn't even thinking about that. Is this lot one that's eligible under the cottage origins?
I don't believe it has the, the total lot area. I, I think it's larger than, I think it's like two acres if I, if I, if I'm correct. Minimum? So it would not qualify under this.
Okay, I'm just curious, yeah.
This is Paul. I think one of the other challenges is the distance. Um, the, the eligible land area for cottages is only within a certain distance of the planning opportunity areas. Uh, and I think this land area is um outside of that envelope.
As well, yeah.
Alright, is that, anything else, Brett? Is there anything else, Brett?
No, that's all I got.
All right, Mr. Puentes, do you have any questions or comments?
No, it's straightforward. I appreciate the fact that it's not engineered, as we said, as we said earlier, but clear and straightforward for a moment.
Yeah, it's weird, square lots. Mr. Stevens, do you have any thoughts?
I don't.
All right. Ms. Teets?
No, Mr. Krasner asked my question, which was, I was wondering if it could be cottages or something else, but it's very straightforward and it totally meets the code. So it is what it is.
All right. Ms. Weiss, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, no, I agree with that. My comment, so I don't have any questions, it seems to me, the requirements. My comments, and this is more for staff and the other planning commission members, is that, you know, we just not recent, not long ago passed that update to the housing chapter, the comprehensive plan, which clearly identifies, you know, a need for more affordable housing. And we just flagged in the recent update that Mr. Starter just referenced, the affordability gap. So it just strikes me that when parcels of land like this become available, it would be nice if there was some sort of program in place that might incentivize or encourage or somehow enable the development of affordable housing or just, you know, some more different types of housing developments than the kind of the traditional single-family lot. I think that's where we're headed sort of philosophically and on a lot of the values that we've supported in our updates to the comprehensive plan recently. So I'd like to know, I mean, yeah, I made the question for staff is when are we likely to start looking at the single-family housing ordinance and is, you know, because that might be a way where we could start thinking about more creative ways to allow us to accomplish the values that we've stayed in, the strategies we've identified with affordable housing in the city.
I think you're, I think you're right that single-family zoning is something that covers a large area of the city. And it's also a piece of legislation that a lot of communities have been looking at and exploring about adding flexibility. City of Minneapolis really led the way with looking at ways to make duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, buy right options as opposed to requiring only one family structure on each lot. The state of Oregon passed state legislation that applies to certain municipalities across the state. There was legislation proposed in California, here in Virginia, neither of which passed that would look at restricting the ability of municipalities to have single-family zoning. I think there are a lot of options available. That's certainly something staff could look into and provide a report back to the planning commission. To your earlier question about programs and policies that could promote affordability, generally the tools that municipalities have available are to provide land at a discount, to provide some sort of low-interest loans or some sort of financial contributions to the project or to provide increases in density. That absent one of those interventions, typically the economics of housing development are sort of what drive pricing points. And so all the public interventions are designed around moving that equation, whether that's providing land, obviously reduces the cost of construction or acquisition. Increasing density allows for more value out of the same amount of land. So, or of course, providing cash reduces the cost of construction as well. So those are generally the options and the levers that communities have available to them.
Thanks, Paul. Do you have anything else, Ms. Weiss?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Wadiska, comments, questions?
Yeah, I mean, not, not much. As everybody said, it's simple. This is, looks like a complicated site because of the grading here. And there's also a big tree, a couple of big trees, but one in particular, looks like that's going to go away based on this design. Is there, I know this is a, you know, the general layout, is there any attempt at all to save the one tree? I guess it's on lot one according to this layout.
I'm assuming that comment was for me. I, again, Adam Bean with Green Built Homes here. The individual trees we will, we will look at once the grading plan process begins. A lot of the trees on the site are very unhealthy, standing basically in a dead state right now, need to be removed. As green builders, I will try my best to save any mature trees that can be saved. Again, we'll get to that point in the grading plan process and see how it shakes out.
Okay. Yeah, anything we can do to save these trees would be, I mean, if they're dead, they're dead, but, you know, I haven't driven by there recently. I was just looking online at the, you know, the Google image, they look healthy online, but I have not taken that notice.
Yes. Well, one of them, quite a few of them, if you look at that, we did an extensive tree inventory for the preliminary plat, you'll see that the arborist we hired has commented on their health as not being so wonderful. There may be one or two that are healthy and will do our best to save, salvage and protect those trees in the grading plan process.
This is Ms. Teets. You know, I drive past there a lot going home and even in the last year or so, big limbs have come down, a tree came down. It seems like every time there's a big storm, something comes down. And so I don't think the trees have been trimmed or been taken care of for a long, long time. And so that's probably part of the problem.
And then lastly, it's not, it's not shown on the, on the plan, but I assume we're going to provide a sidewalk. There's sidewalks all the way across East Broad. Just want to make sure that that's, is that something that you guys are going to put in or, or how's that going to work? I want to make sure that we have.
There's existing sidewalk that will remain.
So, yeah, and then I do have some staff comments. So Adam, we are looking at that during the second review, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's this awkward curb cut that goes next to this retaining wall. And is that what you were talking about, Mr. Fuller, where that's, that's going to go away with the addition of this new pipe stem?
Yeah, we were going to have a discussion with the engineer and one of the concepts is maybe try and get street trees in and swap the sidewalk off the curb. But I've got that staff comment. Adam hasn't seen that yet. That was a recent comment that came in on the second review. So he'll get that comment during this current review.
And it's a question, you know, I guess for the city, it probably, probably never happened, but right along that sidewalk are all these really unattractive electrical lines, these telephone poles. If there's an opportunity with this site is under construction to begin some undergrounding, it would be great. East Broad, right along that route is not attractive with those electrical lines.
Yeah, looks pretty terrible. All right, is that all for you?
It is. Yeah.
All right, I don't really have too much. One question I have, and this must already be an issue, so I'm just curious how it's handled, but how does trash pickup work? Will people drag the trash cans out to the end of the pipe stem and do they leave them not on the sidewalk, I assume? Like, do they have to provide an area or how does that work? I don't even know.
I'm not sure exactly, but I would assume that they have to bring them down to the end of the pipe stem because it's a private drive and not a public street.
And then is there a requirement, presumably they're not allowed to leave them in the sidewalk, right? So it's not a lot of space there right now. And I know, I don't know about trash, I've never actually been down there, but I know like in leaf collection season, sometimes the sidewalks disappear to leaves.
They usually put the trash cans on the sidewalk is what I've seen.
Is there any way to require a trash can area at the end of the pipe stem?
We can, we can look at that since we are dealing with a single driveway and four homes.
Yeah, that's my only thought is that four homes worth of trash cans and recycling out there on the sidewalk is going to be challenging for anyone trying to get down the street. But like I said, I'm sure that's a challenge today. There's plenty of driveways on that street already. But if we are going to be doing anything with sidewalk, just a little bit of space for garbage collection would be great. Otherwise, I think it's fine. I mean, like everyone said, it's more straightforward than most of the pipe stems we see. In terms of the affordable housing comment, I agree with that. I also think anytime we talk about affordable housing or affordable housing goals, if we don't talk about the cost or just sort of pie in the sky stuff, I mean, any kind of affordable solution will have costs that the city will have to pick up. So hopefully those people that, including me, that favor affordable housing initiatives will also support funding them. I assume nobody has any follow-up comments and this is just a work session, so I think we can wrap it up now, but if someone does want to chime in, now is your chance.
Just one, one final comment. I would just encourage the builder to do a little outreach for your sake and for ours when this comes to a hearing, to the folks on Buxton and also probably to the people you abut to the rear on Tyson. Might be a good idea to let them know if they don't already know that what's coming, you know? I mean, we've had some recent subdivisions in this neighborhood as well as in others throughout the city. And, you know, we tend to hear from a lot of folks. We all understand the legal universe within which the subdivision operates, but, you know, I would look at issues like stormwater. I know you haven't done your grading plan yet, but look at issues like that, try to understand if there are any longstanding problems in the neighborhood because those issues will come up without a doubt, you know, they always do. And on this one, you know, you abut a lot of neighbors and I'm sure, you know, that house hasn't changed in over half a century from what I just read. So I think folks have gotten used to the way it is. And before you change it, you might want to do some outreach to find out what concerns they may or may not have. Otherwise, you know, we'll all have a couple of long public hearings listening to it. So if you can head any of that off at the pass, I would recommend you try to do that.
All right. Any other final comments?
Emily, are there, are there any online comments?
Technically work session, you know, I don't think we have to take public comment, but if there are any, I'm happy to hear them.
No, there are none.
Thank you.
Mr. Rankin, can I make one more quick comment? Sorry.
You may.
I just want to mention to Mr. Bean, because he did talk about he was going to try to save some of the trees, but also when you guys do the landscaping here, this is a big piece of property and currently it's mostly grass. As you may know, grass is not good for runoff. It pushes a lot of water off and in a city where we have a lot of flooding and storm drain issues, you know, when you guys do the landscaping, if you can limit the amount of grass and put more beds and things in that, you know, more shrubs and smaller planters that will take up water, that would be really helpful because this whole lot basically, you know, it's sloped down into the road, so all the water comes right off of it.
Sounds like a good idea.
Good evening. This is Kayvon Jabari, the civil engineer for this property. May I have an input in this, please?
Yes, go ahead.
In regards to Mr. Krasner's comment on the courtyard, we need to be cognizant of the fact that by creating a courtyard, we cause additional impervious area. Staff has commented that we need to meet stormwater management requirements. So that by having a courtyard as well as these houses being faced towards the front on, on East Broad Street, that creates possibly additional impervious area which may turn into a challenging situation to meet stormwater management requirements. In regards to the follow-up comment on the lawn area and the runoff coming, indeed, providing stormwater management on the property is going to reduce the runoff. We have to provide that. So I believe that would address the concerns. In regards with the comment on the adjoining neighboring lots on Braxton, I am sure the, my client will follow through with that. But if you notice, the property, like the young lady mentioned, its sheet flows from the rear to the front and everything is going towards East Broad Street and some little bed sheet flow goes on to the church's property. So none of the residential lots in the backward side get affected unless the intent of that comment was in regards to general overall outflow issue in the city, which we're all aware of.
No, no, yeah, I was talking about general outflow because any water that hits the street is going to go in the storm drain. And we already have plenty of water in our storm drain and we don't need more. And, you know, just the use of not having as much grass can make a big difference in that. Also, the use of native plants would be very helpful, things like that, just, you know, they just make everything a little bit more green on the outside.
Yes, ma'am. Sure.
All right, great. Does anyone else have anything to comment on this? It seems like should be straightforward when it comes back for approval. And if not, Paul, I think we're ready to wrap it up. Am I forgetting anything?
I know. Mr. Rankin, I'm sorry, I have a comment not on, on the work session, but just something I should have mentioned during the director's report. Because I just, I'd like to report, or sorry, the most important report, I'd like to report that our website does not reflect our planned meeting schedule. So it'd be great if we could update that. And it would also be helpful if we could, I know it's hard to plan these days, but if we could sort of think about how our work plan for the year might be adjusted, I think that would be helpful, like what on our agenda will we address when, given we've had some understandable delays.
I mean, we have a little, you know, a little bit into the future on the second page of our agenda that seems to address a handful of things, but yeah, I think it's unclear how long we're going to be in this mode of not being able to do in-person meetings. But I would support any adjustments to our work plan that staff wants to pull together and we can talk about that next time if there's questions. And I don't know about the website, but yes, we should update that if it's inaccurate.
Yeah, happy to do that. I think one of the things staff was hoping to do with this meeting tonight was just to see what was involved in terms of required staff support to get one of these remote meetings running, to see whether it was feasible to continue with the two meetings a month schedule or whether we would have to switch to one meeting a month. So obviously I'll circle back with the rest of the staff team this week, next week and see what everybody's thinking. The, we also need to move, we moved this meeting to a Wednesday and that's because we have IT restrictions that are in place while we're doing remote meetings. And that's that we can't meet on the same night as either the council or the school board. It seems like this Wednesday worked and I think staff was going to propose to the commission that we continue using Wednesday nights. So instead of using the first and third Mondays, we would use the first and third Wednesdays of the month. That's what's reflected in the scheduled look ahead on the back of the agenda. Emily, thanks for bringing that up. The, some of the work plan items that I know that we're continuing to work on, the small area plan, staff is meeting with the boards and commissions. We're hoping to bring that back to the planning commission this summer for action by the commission and the council, either in late summer or the fall of this year. And then of course, there will be several land use applications coming up in front of the commission, not only routine subdivisions, but as well as some of the larger redevelopment projects, including the 10-acre site at West Falls Church, Broad and Washington and other applications that may come in. The, your idea of looking at the, the planning commission's work plan and reassessing the work plan, I think that's a good idea. I think we can probably do that, maybe not at the next session. I think we can probably do that, maybe not at the next session, but maybe at a subsequent one. I think, I think what staff's looking for is just a little bit of time to get sort of remote meetings underway. We also have an initiative that's looking at what would be involved in reopening City Hall. So we're spending some of our cycles on that plan as well. But of course, we can bring that work plan, the Planning Commission work plan back and maybe suggest some re-timing of some things.
All right, that's, yeah. And I want to say, everyone, I think, I think everybody did a great job. This meeting went more smoothly than I anticipated. I appreciate staff and everyone else muting and all those things. And I went well, not as good as being in person, but better than catching a deadly virus.
And this is Gary. So thank you for Emily and Shayna for basically producing our first virtual meeting with Paul's help and guidance. So applause, applause.
Yeah, definitely. Great job, staff. No, it went pretty, pretty great.
All right, well, with that, we are adjourned.